To order, Ms. Steele, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Gibson.
Here.
Dr. Orth. Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Hudson's absent. Mr. Crisco.
Here.
Mr. Bizani.
Here.
Mr. Nikosia.
Here.
You have a quorum.
At this time, we're going to ask Dr. Orth to lead us in our invocation and our prayers.
Let's bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we live in a county, a state, and a country where we have so many freedoms. Freedom to worship in any church of faith without persecution. Freedom to choose partners regardless of whom they are. Freedom to travel where and when we want. But more often than not, we forget how lucky we are to have these freedoms. We approach Memorial Day as many of us turn to thinking of outdoor activities with friends and families. The barbecues, the beaches, bush gardens, and so those sales. But for a moment, let's not forget how those freedoms were won. And for this, we recognize Memorial Day for what it truly stands for. The ultimate sacrifice so many of our men and women in our services have made to keep these freedoms alive. We should forever be grateful to them, as well as to all the men and women in service of our country today. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Orth. At this time, we need a motion for the approval of the minutes for February 10th.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Got a motion moved in second in the discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 We need a motion for the adoption of the agenda.
Second.
It moves in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
We need a motion for the approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. At this time, we'll just move on down to our matters presented by the board. Yes, sir.
So, I didn't know this until actually yesterday, but we're getting a Dunkin' Donuts at Gloucester Point. Found that out just yesterday. I still think they built it on the wrong side of the road.
It's been on the, yeah, we actually.
Should be on the outgoing side.
I think there was a lot of discussion why they couldn't go the other side.
Really?
But yeah, no, it's been on the drawing board for quite a while.
So that's pretty exciting.
Yeah. As well as the Starbucks that just opened.
Because I love Dunkin' Donuts. Their coffee is special.
I feel like you've got to weigh yourself. Be careful.
Yeah, I watch. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Any other matters presented by the board? Okay, Ms. Steele, county administrators items.
I don't have anything tonight, thank you. Mark, mark the day.
You may make six thirty there, Mr. Chair.
Let me do this thing. We'll go home by six fifteen. Okay, moving on. Citizen comment period. Any citizen comment period? No citizens would like to rest a ball? If not, Ms. Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have one submission from Kenneth Hogg Senior from Gloucester Point District. Greetings. When Mr. Schlesinger, slash, it's been too long, sorry. Schlesinger replaced Mr. Dame as Utilities Director. He inherited the nightmare of a department that suffered from years of neglect and mismanagement. Unlike Mr. Dame, Mr. Schlesinger was a highly experienced director and engineer with disciplines in public water and sewer. Significant progress was made under Mr. Schlesinger's tenure, who set the foundation for turning the department around. During his tenure, Mr. Dawson, who was also a highly experienced director and engineer with a discipline in public water and sewer, was able to substantially improve the department on the foundation left by his predecessor. However, that work is not complete by any means. Now that Mr. Dawson has retired, drastic changes in supervision of the department and engineering review processes have been made that will undoubtedly compromise the positive progress of undoing the nightmare inherited by Mr. Schlesinger and Mr. Dawson. Those changes have also increased Gloucester taxpayers' liability risks exponentially. One mistake made in the water treatment process, no matter for what reason or cause, could potentially sicken or kill thousands of people who drink it. An operation with such extreme risk must be directed by someone who is highly experienced and highly qualified. Such operations should never be compromised to facilitate nepotism, as appears to be the case in the appointment of the current director. The Utilities Director's position certainly should never be used as a training ground for someone who is not already highly experienced in public water and sewer disciplines and who has no engineering background whatsoever in those disciplines. I recommend the board insist that the search for a qualified Utilities Director be resumed immediately. I also recommend the board take a good look at how much effort actually went into searching for a replacement for Mr. Dawson. Not a lot, I assure you. I also recommend you insist the current person occupying the position of Director immediately begin submitting regular monthly department reports. The last monthly report from Utilities was submitted to the County Administrator by Mr. Dawson for the month of November 2023. Five consecutive months of inadequate public transparency and non-reporting is as completely unacceptable as the nepotism we have seen used to fill such an important position. Thank you very much. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Cohen. Moving on to our work session agenda. Number one, A on our agenda is Oyster Forever proposal for construction of an oyster habitat sanctuary reef beneath the Payne Landings Pier. And that will be done by our presenter, Mr. Matt Barber, Director of Fox Recreation Tourism.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Try not to slow down this quick meeting, so. Okay, yeah, that's fine. I guess the main thing we'll start with is we received a proposal, I guess, mid-January from a local nonprofit called Oysters Forever. And they're looking to put an oyster sanctuary reef under the Payne's Landing Pier. As we go through this, if anybody has any questions during the presentation, just let me know and we'll stop and answer those. We have a representative here, I believe, from Oysters Forever, Mr. Newton, who's the one who acted kind of heads this project for the nonprofit. He's the one who came to the county. Basically, what they're looking for is really just a support from the county. They've already kind of put in all their permits, all their information in various places. And really, they need a letter of support and something that shows that we actually are okay with them doing this project. All right, so the proposal here, as you see, that's actually Payne's Landing, the local boat ramp we have. And Gloucester County maintains and actually owns the property that it's on, and that's the logo of Oysters Forever, which is the local nonprofit. They're an established group who has done several projects like this throughout the county, notably one at Carter's Creek. And they specifically targeted this area for access to the Ware River and just kind of to help with that general body of water. To kind of give a quick overview of the project, you'll see on the bottom there, this is what their sanctuary reef actually looks like with the cinder blocks before they construct anything, well, before the oysters and all get onto the cinder blocks. If you'll see the way it's sloped and it has all the nooks and crannies that are in there, that just helps the embryos of the oysters actually attach and gives them a natural, I guess, room so that predators can't get to them and they can actually grow and thrive. And you'll see the top there, that's what the oyster reef actually looks like once they've established. And I think that's after two or three years it takes about to get to that point. Mr. Newton over there with Oysters Forever sketched out this document for us. And this shows the general layout of where the oyster reefs would go and, you know, in relation to the pier and the mean low tide, mean high tide, all of that. So it lays out all that really detailed. They utilize local volunteer groups, Boy Scouts primarily, I know some Eagle Scout projects and things like that to actually assemble these reefs and get them placed in the waterways. I know most of us know all the benefits and have heard before the benefits of oysters in the community, but I kind of wanted to run through some real quick, just in case it benefits anybody listening, anybody from the public. Really, the main thing they do is they clean the waterway. What they do is they clean algae off the top, which allows the sunlight to get into the vegetation below and helps clear up the waterway. They have a natural filter that allows anything to turn to sand that kind of goes through them. So that's the reason why it's considered a good thing to build these structures and help the water thrive and help the oysters grow. So I think all material and labors, anything like that, that's going to go into the project, they're actually doing. This isn't going to require anything from the county as far as direct or indirect cost. It's strictly their doing and we're just giving the okay to do it on our property. Anytime you install a permanent or semi-permanent structure like this, you do have some questions and you kind of want to run through some things. Things like, will this affect any maintenance we do to the pier? Will this affect any, you know, cause any danger, anybody who actually utilizes the pier, anything like that? And we kind of vetted all that and we felt like everything was good to go and it wouldn't impact any of our normal usage to the actual boat landing. They actually, the oyster reefs, they themselves create natural fish habitat. So anytime, you know, it'll help with fishermen who actually like to use the pier because the fish will actually be attracted to that area. So that's one of the other benefits. And the reason why they, this is a new approach they're trying is actually underneath the pier. Because I don't know if anybody's ever seen these structures out, but they do, putting them in the middle of the waterways, they do kind of create. They have to barricade them and block them out and show that they're, you know, they're actual protected structures, which can create a hazard, you know, for boaters, anybody using the waterway. So by putting this under the pier, it kind of allows them to have that natural barrier that it won't impact any waterway usage. I guess our main recommendation going forward is to kind of see what the board's, you know, temperature is on this and see if we want to, if they're okay, have any questions, concerns. We've worked with Mr. Wilmot to draft a document. Really, it covered the liability, all that stuff, and we haven't had him sign it or anything like that. But it's basically, we've done all of our legwork to make sure there's not going to be any sort of issues or liability to the county before, during, or after the construction. Another thing I want to highlight is the oysters, I mean, the structure can be removed at any time the county deems necessary with 30-day notice. That's all in the document. I believe it's in the board packet. And that's pretty much it. So do we have any comments, questions?
Yes, sir.
So are any of these oysters harvested or are they just permanently under the pier?
No, they're not harvestable. They're meant to be protected there. But one benefit I didn't mention that, you know, obviously, the more oysters you grow, that that creates the embryos for more oysters to be out that allows for watermen to harvest and all that. So any ones you put out there allows for more oysters to be in the waters overall.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yes, Ms. Steele, Dr. Orth.
Okay, so, yeah, I think this is a neat project. I really like what you guys are doing. And, you know, where oysters means good stuff. Are these objects, projects, are they seeded before they go out or are they going to be attracted natural set?
I don't think they are. You can probably, are they seeded ahead of time? Yes. Okay.
Okay, so that could be a problem depending on, do you know, are there oysters sitting in the Wilson Creek area right now that might provide the spat? Because I think one of the things that happens with any kind of substrate, a lot of times they try to put shells out at the time that there are oyster larvae in the water, which is usually around June. But if you don't have any oyster larvae in the water, a lot of these objects get covered with gunk and then become a less viable habitat. So I know the Bay Foundation, they have put out structures different than this. And what they do is they soak them in areas with larvae that sit and then they put them out as attached larvae. So I think it's something that you might want to watch carefully when you put them out because if you put them out, you ought to put them out now rather than in the end of August because oysters spawn in June. And you've got, you know, about a three-week period in which these larvae are around. Again, I don't know, have you looked at Wilson Creek to see if there's any natural set going on on some of the rock structures that are put out there? Because that would tell you a lot about whether there are larvae around.
I would say I haven't looked specifically, but I do think I, just from our lady who went out there for works that took pictures, I think there were some in the general area.
Yeah, I mean, that's the important thing is because if you don't have it, and that has been a problem with some of the big oyster reefs that have been put out, is that they put the reefs out, but you don't have oyster setting on them and the reefs essentially, they disappear because the shells dissolve, which is an important reason why you need to have larvae to rebuild these reefs.
Okay.
So, and just as a comment regarding water clarity, the likelihood of these oysters providing any water clarity benefits to the Wilson Creek are probably close to zero.
Yeah, I know, I know.
I think it's really great.
Every little bit helps, I think, yeah.
It's an educational component. I have used it all the time showing classes. You put oysters in a bucket and they clean the area. I mean, it's great, but we have to be very careful in that that doesn't help in general the water clarity. You need billions of oysters, which I know is the effort of the Bay Foundation, is to get as many oysters out there as possible that then can have an impact. But right now, it is an issue. And there's a big debate going on because I follow the oyster quite a lot.
I know, you're the expert, not me, so.
Yeah, I'm just telling you, yeah, I'm very interested in it because we did some experiments in the past in my own work trying to plant oysters with seagrass and nothing happens.
Yeah.
The seagrass needs a lot more light and these oysters, you need a lot of oysters to do that.
No, I completely understand.
But I think in general, I think the project is good doing more like that because of the educational benefits of what it tells people about the bay, I think is really very, very important.
Yep, and I agree. For some reason, you know, if it does, stuff doesn't attach and all that, I'm sure they're willing to do some different things with that. And if not, and nothing ever goes, we can just tell them, hey, pull it up. I mean, if worse comes to worse, you know.
As soon as possible because it is the month of June when these things are spawning. And that's when the larvae are in the water. You'll want to get it when the substrate is clean. That's why a lot of the shell that VMRC puts out for reverbishing reefs, they always get them out early in the spring. So when the set is out, they get them.
Yep. No, I completely understand. And a part of this is, not saying the red tape process, but just doing all the work, lead work ahead of time, you know, they had to go through so many different permits to be able to put this. So this is just one of those.
If we can help move that process along, let us know.
Okay, all right, will do.
I don't want to encroach on our six thirty deadline, but Dr. Orth, does VIM still produce spats?
They have a very active program. They are working with the aquaculture industry. And one of the main research programs they have is looking at stock that is most suitable for the bay in terms of diseases. I don't know if they provide the spat anymore. They've worked with industry for many, many years. But I think the industry has taken off and there is a place like in Gwinns Island that raises spat and then sells them. So I don't know if they do it right now or not. The whole program is really geared towards, first of all, dealing with the diseases, which doesn't go away, and producing stock that are less vulnerable to the diseases we have.
Any other questions? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'm glad we have a scientist on the court. To give some insight on these issues that I do not have knowledge on, but I just wanted to thank you for your presentation and also congratulate you on your promotion to Director. You have some big shoes to fill.
Yes, I know.
Miss Legg, who led that department so ably, but I know you're very experienced in this area and you're going to do a great job.
I appreciate that.
And I certainly support this project. I think it's a really good idea to put it under the dock. I think you make a good point that it eliminates that hazard within the waterway. So I think it's a great project.
Okay, Mr. Gibson. Anyone else? Another board member?
Just to clarify then, there is no resolution.
No, it's just, yeah.
It's just the consensus to move forward and.
Yep. Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Let's continue. Oyster night.
Yes, I don't have, I don't have the great pictures.
The discussion of proposed oyster shell recycling program at the old page site. Ms. Steele?
Yes, I was contacted by a representative from the Chesapeake Bay Foundation that has an existing program where they encourage restaurants, as well as others, to recycle the oyster shells that then go back into the bay and make the natural habitat for the oysters to grow on. And the, somebody else within the organization had suggested, because they knew Gloucester, that the page, the old page school site would be a very great, easy, central location. So I'm bringing this to you tonight as an initial thought. As the board packet says, if the board is interested in doing this, we will work with the county attorney to do an MOA. We have examples from some of the other localities that have done this. And then, secondly, that MOA would state that if the property is sold or leased by the county, then the site would have to be moved. They have an active volunteer organization that comes and checks the sites. There was a picture in your board packet and you can see that it's an attractive wooden structure that goes around. It's either a six by six or an eight by eight. They have individual cages, kind of with like, just like doing a crab pot without a top on it, that they can pull out so they can fit like three or six in there to make it easier to transport them. And they've said that some of their locations have to be dumped, accessed once a month. Others, it's once a year. They check to see how often. We did ask about if there was an odor or any issue there and with the sun baking on them and things. They haven't had any complaints about those kind of problems. By having it at a centralized and visible location, there's probably less chance of vandalism as well. Mr. Baines and I discussed about if the board wants to move forward, where would be a location that would be easily accessible? And when the Utilities Department moved into the bus garage, they are not using the entire fence compound that had been asphalted and everything for the buses. Our compound is smaller, so there's still a sizable area that has asphalt where cars could drive in, drop off oyster shells, and move on out. And that also would give the visibility of the employees going to and from all the time if there were any issues there. So I would recommend that if the board is interested, I recommend to try it. I don't think there's anything to really lose in it. Again, it's volunteers. They cover all the expenses. And if we end up with a vandalism problem or nobody's using it, then hopefully they could take that structure and go somewhere else with it. So I'm just kind of looking for consensus and seeing nodding heads.
I think it's definitely, again, a very worthwhile project. Again, I've been following the Bay Foundation through the efforts they have for getting oysters in the bay. The problem with shell, of course, and just for your little bit of science information, shell is calcium and in the water it dissolves. And actually, there are animals that live and eat it to the shell. So the half-life of these shells in the water is pretty quick. So that's why they need to add more and more shell to these bottoms because they have a short life, half-life. They do find shells in midlands that are hundreds and thousands of years old, but they're not in water. So I think, you know, we need to commend the Bay Foundation for this effort in collecting shells. I know they use it in spat-on-shell settlement for putting oysters on reefs. They tried a project where they put baby shells and the cow and the horses came and just ate them all. By putting spat-on-shell, these little babies spat on whole shell, it protects the baby. So I think anything we can do to encourage people to save their shell and dump it somewhere, I think is a worthwhile effort. And we may want to have some signage so people know that there's a place out there on Seventeen. So, yeah, I think it's a great idea.
Our Clean Community Office would help promote this as part of the recycling initiative.
Okay, any other discussion from the board members? So where do we go from here?
We will move forward with working with the county attorney then.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Until I can be of any help again, just let me know. And with the Bay Foundation, they, I've kind of worked with them before in the past.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Steele. Next up is update on public utilities. Ms. Katie Legg, Director of Public Utilities.
Good evening. When I last spoke to you a little bit more informally at the board retreat in February, I brought you up to date on some regulatory concerns, but I thought it was really important to regularly update you on projects and not only just the regulation side of things. So tonight, I want to give you an overview. We're going to start with projects that have been completed to date, current projects that are in process and also will carry forward into FY '25. I'll touch on our regulatory requirements so that everybody can understand sort of the breadth of the situation that Utilities deals with. We'll look at FY '25 as it's been adopted and what some potential changes may be. And we'll end with some actions, items, and next steps. So first, we have a list of completed projects. They are broken into the various line items. That's really just made it easier for me to understand and to categorize. So we do have pump replacements at two pump stations. Those are down in Terrapin Cove and Yacht Club. The variable frequency drive, the VFD on P-10, this actually allows the pump to start and the motor levels change versus when it starts, it just ramps up and then we run into electrical issues. Commercial dump trailer, rebuilding electric check valves. The waterline repair at Burley, everybody remembers that one. And then some other pump repairs at the water treatment plant. Those were all completed already in this fiscal year. Bottom line, we saved $779. These are our current, go ahead.
One by Wawa also is an important fix because we were losing a lot of water there unbeknownst to people. So that was another big fix.
Yes.
And that was a lot of water per hour that no one knew about.
That no one knew.
And so we fixed it.
Yeah. And so kind of as an aside, with the AMI project, we're going to be a little bit of a test case for them. They have received the GIS mapping of our water system and they're going to identify a dozen locations to help us scan our water system to hopefully identify leaks before they get too bad. So current projects that we have going on right now, replacing the auto dialers at the pump stations. So right now, our pump stations have an alarm system if the water level gets too high and it's in danger of flooding or overflowing. And the person on call receives a notification to their cellphone. They can acknowledge it, but they can't turn it off. And not every situation or every pump station requires someone to go check it immediately. We have a couple that we know are our problem ones. Replacing them and updating the technology would allow our staff to acknowledge it and turn it off remotely versus now us having to pay our on-call person two-hour minimum to go in and flip the switch. This will take care of 15 of our pump stations in this fiscal year. Those actually are being installed this week. We have pump station repairs. This again goes back to pump stations 16 and 17. Pipe replacement, very badly needed. The septic system replacement at the water treatment plant, this is also under contract. Pump station 15 control panel, this, you know, monitors or changes which pump is operating. All of our pump stations have two pumps, changes all of that out, also has the alarm system installed with it. This was supposed to actually be two pump stations this fiscal year, but the price came in so high that we could only do one. All of these remaining projects are in some process, but they are carried forward into FY '25. The water system security, this is part of our risk and resilience assessment that I'll talk about a little bit more. What we've been able to do so far is fencing our reverse osmosis well, as well as fencing at the east end of the dam. And what will be carried forward into FY '25 is our security camera system. That is really just because of equipment delays. Pump rebuild is sort of a general category. We've had a lot of pump failures. In fact, our most recent one, as you were updated several weeks ago, is well number one for the RO plant. Well, the pump motor fried. It was 14 months old. Apparently, we have been replacing it with the same kind repeatedly. So we have now switched to a different brand. That is actually going to be installed by Friday, I believe. Because that well has been out of commission, our surface water plant has been operating at 20 hours a day instead of 16. AMI support work, this is the things that we need to do to get ready for AMI. We had a lot of meter lids that were metal that we have to replace. We need poles for data collection units, that sort of thing. So we expect that to keep going into FY '25. The collection systems for pump stations 11 and 13, this deals with easement clearing at pump station 11. So we can't even get into some of our places right now because the easement hasn't been cleared, let alone to be able to maintain or get into any of those pipes. And then the last two are ARPA funded. And then the last two are ARPA-funded projects. The reverse osmosis plant, skid number one membrane replacement, that is under contract. That will actually get carried forward into FY25. We didn't think it would, but we just received word from the manufacturer that they are now even further out for the membrane to get to us. And then pump station 11 floodproofing has been moving a little bit slow. There were some reports and studies that had been done over the last year or two that unfortunately did not leave us with any tangible plans or path forward. So we are working through all of those to get us to a better place so that we can finish that project. So a little bit about our regulatory requirements. And we have some free biggies, really. So first is our consent order through HRSD. You know, the HRSD is under a consent order, and that includes the localities that participate. The biggest, if you ever hear us say, is the MOM Plan, the Management Operations and Maintenance. So this describes our system, the regulations that govern us, our organizational framework, as well as how we're going to comply with the consent order. We, the county, had one approved in 2012, and it has not been updated since. So the plan outlines compliance, as I mentioned. So one of the big ones includes annual inspection and cleaning of at least 20% of our sewer collection system. We have just over 21,000 feet of sewer lines, so annually we should be cleaning and inspecting at least 4,500 feet of those. In 2023, we were inspecting about 7% or 8%. The sanitary sewer overflow, these are reports that we're required to submit to HRSD anytime there is an overflow in our sewer system. It's usually due to a mechanical failure, debris in the lines, sometimes a weather event. And so there's no certain number that you're supposed to do, you just submit them as needed. In the last 15 months, I've seen six. And then we are also required to submit an annual report for the previous fiscal year that is due in November. The other part of the consent order is fats, oils, and greases, we call it FOG. So the process and the forms are being updated. They were sent to Mr. Wilmot's office at the end of 2023, and so with some of those comments, staff have started to review them again. County code does require annual inspection of the establishments, their food service establishments, just more than restaurants, it's churches, schools. And they are, our inspector is supposed to go in and inspect their grease control devices, their records, et cetera.
Now, these are just establishments that are on the sewer system, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so that would eliminate a lot of, off 17 places.
And so they're, they are supposed to register with us. And there's an application form. It is kind of one of those where we have to know about it. For example, if there's a church that might be on our sewer system but maybe never did any sort of food preparation or anything, sometimes it's just word of mouth with hoping that we know if they've changed their operations. EPA and DEQ. So the EPA requires that localities that serve over 3,300 folks every five years certify that they have conducted a risk and resiliency assessment and an emergency response plan. We did one, an RRA, the Risk and Resilience Assessment, in June of '21, and the emergency response plan was done in 2022. Both of those we will have to recertify in 2026. I do say that it is unfunded. Once we review, I do not expect there to be any major changes to the existing documents, and we may be able to handle this in-house if there are any modifications. I would expect in the next five years for the 2031 certification, that might require consultant to review these again. These were done by a consultant. The, the risk and resilience assessment, so that goes back to the, the projects for the water system security that I mentioned earlier. So we are working through some of the recommendations in there. The lead service line inventory, this is a federal mandate that is managed at the state level, and we are required to identify all service lines in our system. And that includes not only our system-owned lines, but also private lines. The inventory is due in October. This, the EPA released guidance on this in 2022, and at this point, what we will be able to do is identify lines based on building code, dates of building, and at the private side, our crew will be out when they're meter reading, still by hand, and they will be able to visually inspect all of the connections. Again, the inventory is due in October, but as of right now, there is no due date for what the remediation plan is. We know that this is going to turn into a much bigger thing, and if you have property owners that have either a lead line or an unknown, you have to help them figure out how to replace it. You don't have to pay for it, but you have to help them figure out what the funding options are. So that is all still up in the air, and the EPA, I believe, keeps changing some due dates. The groundwater withdrawal permit, this is through DEQ. This allows us to withdraw water from the aquifer and operate the RO plant. It expires in March of '26, and the application is due nine months before. And then this last one is one that we talked about before in February, this is our VIPD's permit. And this monitors the discharge from the RO plant for chlorides and sulfates. We have received multiple warning letters over the last year or two. This permit does expire in November, and the application is due in June, so we're working through the final copy of that right now. We have now received our notice of violation, which was the next step, and we have a meeting with the DEQ Enforcement Office tomorrow to help us work through getting towards compliance. And then DCR dam permitting. So this allows us to actually operate the dam. So we have a conditional operation and maintenance certificate. We used to have a permanent one, but there were a few things that needed to be addressed, so the state gave us a conditional certificate that was good for two years. It expires at the end of October, so our application will be due in July. It's conditional because of the items that are outstanding that are listed below. So the first is the dam maintenance requirement. So the biggest piece of this is the tree removal on the dam. So anytime you have vegetation that is greater than three inches in diameter, you actually have to go in and remove it by the root system, which involves us changing the riprap and filling in holes. So because we are doing that sort of work to the dam, we're required to submit an alterations permit to DCR. That was required to be submitted in March of '23. We have just submitted that in May. So we have not heard back yet. The inundation study, that was completed in 2023. That is reviewed annually, mostly to look at the change in property owners, should there be a dam break or some sort of flood. And then we send out an annual mailing to those property owners. The emergency action plan, this will be complete by the end of this fiscal year. This was also required to be done in February of '23. VIPD's compliance, I listed back here only because as we work through that permitting issue with DEQ, if there are any sort of solutions that involve alterations to the dam, we will have to go through another alterations permit. And then we are also required to have an annual engineering inspection, and this is an independent engineering inspection. So we bring in an outside engineering firm to do an inspection of our property, and then they provide us their inspection report. So moving ahead into FY25. So these are the projects that were part of the adopted budget. They are on schedule. The last couple of pump stations to update the, the auto dialers, the tree removal at dam, you see has the asterix, that notes that it's a regulatory compliance issue, as well as inspecting and cleaning 20% of our collection system. Additional pumps at the surface water plant, and we have FMRR contingency. We have HVAC repairs that are needed at the water treatment plant, most notably the HVAC system that cools off the RO plant, as well as in the lab. Hydrant replacements, we are trying to get on a better schedule. Our hydrant inspections had stalled for some time, and so they are starting those back up. And with that, we know, especially as we get towards older ones, there will be a cost associated with them. Replacing one hydrant is about $3,500. AMI bond payment, the motor control center at the surface water plant, this basically controls everything, and not to really make light of it, but it does look like something out of Apollo 13. It's old, and it's not even a repairable thing at this point. This needs to be totally replaced and actually needs to be relocated. It currently sits in the pipe room of the surface water plant, and if there is any sort of flooding, that, that's bad, water and electricity don't mix. And then our Clements Gloucester water line replacement, sorely in need of being taken care of, and the Forest Hill Avenue water line extension, which is paid for with using development fund. So some underfunded or unfunded projects. Over the last few months, there have been quite a few surprises. So the repairs to the surface water plant leak, this is in filter number one. This is a crack in the structural foundation of this filter. This is inside and outside. You can see what was budgeted in FY25, and it is an anticipated shortage of at least $200,000. At the same time that that crack is addressed, when you do that, you clean out everything out of the filter, and all of that filter media needs to be replaced. And this is layers and layers and layers of gravel and sand and anthracite. That was never referenced in a report that we received. So that is a ballpark estimate of $100,000. This has been a very difficult figure to get because it is so specialized. Our operators have reached out to a couple of companies as well as other water systems trying to, to find that. The water treatment plant SCADA upgrades, we have budgeted $115,000. That is a shortage of $500,000 plus. That would allow all of our systems to be viewable from computer screens to monitor chemical feeds, pump work, all of it. Right now, what they can see are our water tower levels and our water pressure, and they can see things at the RO plant. So a lot of our chemical feed systems are not all tied together, and doing all of this would allow that entire system to talk to each other. VIPD's compliance, we did budget $500,000, that is a carry forward also. We don't know what the shortage will be, if any. As we work with DEQ, we will have a better understanding. Pump station 14, control panel and pump replacement, this is the pump station on Beehive Drive, so this operates that entire shopping center. And that control panel was supposed to have been replaced at the same time as 15, but there were not enough funds. The Gloucester Point Tower circulation was, I don't believe, on any list. So the elevation of the Gloucester Point Tower is lower than the Courthouse and Page, and so the water out of that tower gets stale and has to be dumped. So adding a circulation system to it like we did up here at the Courthouse would make it so that we don't have to dump 225,000 gallons of water. This really became a critical issue to us when the RO plant was shut down and we're on longer operational hours at the surface water plant, and we're headed into really warm months, and our water supply is critical.
And that's treated water?
Yeah. It is treated.
It hurts.
I, I agree. I agree. And then we also need to replace pumps three and eight at the surface water plant. Pump three is one of the smaller, I'm sorry, is one of the, yes, one of the smaller ones up on the platform at the raw water intake from the reservoir, and pump eight is one of our finished water pumps. And then we have ongoing electrical issues that also was not on our list. So this has come as, over the last few months, we have continued to experience electrical issues with our various pumps and systems. I mentioned well number one, pump motor, the same week, pump two, which is also a raw water intake, had an electrical issue as well and had to be replaced. So all of those, we're looking at roughly $1.15 million in a shortfall.
Hey Katie, how critical is it the Gloucester Point Tower circulation? Now, given an unknown element of this summer's problems that we could have with drought, can that be done quickly? Because it seems like 250,000 gallons dropped regularly is a lot of water, as you know.
It is a lot of water. It, it could be, and that sort of goes into the next step of reallocating funds. So where we are now with potential changes and looking at FY25, do I think we can get it done before the end of the fiscal year? Probably not. This would have to be engineered, and then of course, getting the equipment. So as we look at potential changes to FY25, we do have dollars earmarked for compliance projects, which of course are going to go to the VIPD's issue first. Getting back into compliance is critical. Then we have our ARPA-funded pump station 11 project. If we were to repurpose these funds, it would have to go through the vetting process through Mr. Wilmot's office, but that may free up money that we could then use to some of these other critical projects. And it is a potential change because pump station 11 floodproofing has taken so long, and I know that we are under a deadline to spend ARPA funds. And then the last two projects are engineering funds for extensions to those two water lines. They are not critical right now, and, you know, we have higher, higher needs. That right there is $1.17 million if we were to repurpose any of those. So a little bit on the budget, our application and development fees are way down. We are trending about 15% to 20%. We're just not seeing the development yet that we had anticipated, mostly from the reserves. However, our water and sewer charges revenue is projected to be about 105% of what we budgeted. We do have vacancy and other savings. Our vacancy savings this year will run about $200,000. And while this year's budget was predicated on using $2 million of fund balance, we anticipate using 1.1 million. FY25 will also see a slow development. I believe our latest update is we will likely not see any of those development fee revenues, specifically for the reserves, until late FY25, early FY26. So action items and/or next steps, you don't have a resolution, but if there is a consensus that you would like us to explore repurposing the ARPA funds to some of these other projects, I would be happy to work. I would be happy to work with Ms. Callaway and Mr. Wilmot to put those things through the vetting process. You will have before you in August, a reappropriation for the water system security projects that did not make it in the FY '25 adopted budget because we thought it would be done by then. And then, from our perspective and me personally, I'll be continuing to consider the 10-year plan modifications as we find new things to fix.
Dr. Or.
Yeah. A couple of things on the ARPA funds. Have we even explored at the state level whether there are unused ARPA funds at the state or even federal level that might be available? I know that there are items in the paper and others that say some places have not expended their ARPA funds. And I know the state got some funds. So, I don't know whether that's even possible.
I have not. I'm certainly happy to talk to Ms. Callaway and see if she is aware of where to check first. Because the other thing to consider, if we do repurpose these ARPA funds, Pump Station 11 floodproofing still needs to happen. And so, you know, we could be looking still at another million dollar cost that has to be funded.
Right. But I mean, given some issues that may come about this year from hurricanes and knowing the issues with 11, I don't think you want to move too far from getting that fixed because it floods.
Oh, I agree. No, we haven't stopped. So, Pump Station 11 had a consulting firm do an assessment two years ago or so, I think. And from that came a report that didn't have any plans or usable cost estimates. So, we are basically having to start over. We know what we want to do, but we're having to start over and come up with the actual plans for them. So, that's still going to happen. With Pump Station 11, once that is done, the other one that is also in a flood zone is Pump Station 13, which is our major one here on Main Street. But we can't do that one until we do 11 because 11 will take some of the load off of 13, which is really critical. We don't want to fix 13 wrong.
Ms. Bazani.
Thank you, Ms. Leg. I know you, since taking this position, you've probably drinking from a fire hose, learning the department. But do we have professional engineers on your staff?
Yes, so...
How many professional engineers do we have?
So, the county has two.
Dedicated to your department?
No. No.
What are they dedicated to?
So, we have Mr. Baines. He is a PE. And we have Mr. Beetley. He is the county's engineer. And he probably spends 75% of his time helping us through projects. We have an assistant utilities engineer. She just hasn't earned her PE yet.
Are you looking for a dedicated professional engineer in your organization?
In utilities, not at this time.
We do have a new member on our utilities advisory committee that made it known of his expertise in what, is that everything?
No, we had no clue. He showed up to the second meeting and said, hey, I really like pumps and motors and things and...
And he is an absolute expert that I think is willing to offer his advice free of charge as a member of the committee.
That's what I was going to say too, if I can. A lot of the projects have an engineering aspect to them. So, when we've had a full engineering support in the utilities department before, they're doing things like approving the site plan work and participating in that and obviously helping with repairs and things. But all these projects, all these other special things go out to private engineers. We wouldn't have the level of staffing without probably having five or six full-time engineers on. But I think we have a very, very good team. We are advertising for another engineer for the county who could lend assistance over there, just like Mr. Beetley is. But please do know, we hire contract engineers and that's always been the case.
And I know George spends a lot of time with utilities.
I think that, he does. And I think the real advantage of having a deputy who's a PE and having Mr. Beetley with his years of experience, as well as May who's working, is that they talk the same language to the private engineers that you hire. I mean, that is very important. The situation where we got a project, what was spent on the ARPA money that doesn't tell us what we needed to know, an engineer should have been working with that firm to say, what have you done? You've written this humongous document that doesn't tell us what to do and we can't put it out to bid. So, that's where the engineers come into play and help. I wanted to reference back. The board may remember when we were offered ARPA money before by the state, which is the one and only time. And we couldn't accept it. Many localities couldn't accept it because it was actually not meeting the federal requirements. And so, our county attorneys pointed that out, several others. We went back. I even talked with Delegate Hodges about how can we get this money re-appropriated to localities that didn't take it? It was supposed to go to the individuals who were going to help them with their bill paying, but it didn't meet the federal requirements. So, there is no additional money that I have seen come through in all the state organizations and things. We are continually working two different sources, looking at the infrastructure, all the different federal RD and EDAs. Most everything that is offered through those are loans. They are not grants. But we have our person who is working at the Middle Peninsula Planning District Commission, who is also looking out for us and watching anything that comes through. So, if we can find a grant, we're sure going to apply for it.
Yes, Mr. Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Regarding the ARPA funds and regarding Pump Station 11, I would be open to considering reallocating that money if, in the opinions of the experts, the engineers and your leadership feel that there are more urgent projects that need to be addressed. It sounds like the situation at Gloucester Point with the loss of water is a pretty urgent need. I don't know if possibly the county administrator's contingency fund could address that if it gets to an emergency level. Perhaps that's a funding option. So, I just put that out there for discussion. Also, I just wanted to thank you for your very detailed presentation. And for anyone who is questioning your leadership, I think your knowledge, your knowledge of the projects, your knowledge of the budget should dispel any concerns about your ability to lead the department. To me, being a department head is about managing people, managing projects, and managing a budget. And you are very experienced in that. You do a good job. You have a track record in all three of those skills with your previous leadership position. And so, I fully supported you being hired. I think you're doing a great job in addressing some issues that were occurring. You are a very good communicator, as you've just demonstrated. And I think that one of the things you've talked to us about is how you have really tried to encourage the employees there. You've tried to be a good listener to address any of the concerns that they've had in the department. And that's all the hallmarks of being an excellent leader. So, thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
And we will do our best to address these needs.
And I'll second Dr. Or. Mr. Gibson's comments. And because I'm on the utility committees, I've gotten to know some people in the pits. And all I can say is they are extremely pleased by the leadership and are excited about the direction the department is taking. They see dramatic changes and attitudes of people in the department. And they're looking forward to, you know, really pushing forward and making this a much more better and very efficient system. So, like I said, I've been pleased to be part of the committee and learned a lot and by talking to the people who are out there day in, day out. And I try to go to the projects when they're working online to see what they're doing. You know, we have a great group of people out there and they are dedicated. And as Ms. Leg said, when those little alarms go off, people have to wake up in the middle of the night to go check them. Or on Christmas Eve, we had two people come from the eastern shore fishing to come back and fix a problem on the road into the courthouse. That says a lot about the dedication of our staff. They, you know, literally, they're on a boat on the eastern shore fishing and they came back that afternoon, New Year's, Christmas Eve.
Well, thank you for that. And like I shared with you all at the board retreat, first and foremost, that was the most important thing for you to understand from my perspective, is that the staff is amazing. They truly love serving their community. And nobody has really said to them before, thank you for your customer service. Because they didn't see it that way. They said, I fix pipes. No, you serve your customers. You have great employees in utilities.
And we did meet at the new facility. The committee liked the facility. And I can tell you, the staff loves their new home. And the showers are inside and a bathroom.
It was like a pool string.
Any other questions from, yes, Ms. Steel?
Yeah, Ms. Chair. Just in reference to the funding situation, I appreciate the comment about letting the expertise of the staff kind of help guide you all because Katie and as well as George's assistants, they're on the phone with DEQ and DCR and Hampton Roads, you know, HRSD constantly. And they're really understanding what needs to be done. As Ms. Leg stated, we still need to get the pump station out of the flood area. That's going to take probably a million or more dollars and more time. In the meanwhile, these pressing priorities, which the biggest one, we still don't know, until DEQ says, this will work and we accept it. Because every idea that's been brought up before by the contracted engineers, as well as our staff, they have not accepted. So, there's a lot of unknown there. As far as the county, so I think that, you know, Katie's got a suggestion of how to handle this and I think that's great. As far as the comment about county administrator contingency, because this is an enterprise account, I would absolutely be bringing that to the board because it sort of crosses the line. But the utilities department does have their own reserve. So, the first thing that we would be doing is looking at the reserve. It's probably going to be brought out at the next meeting when Ms. Callaway, couldn't be here tonight, is going to talk about, you know, the third quarter report, et cetera. In reviewing the situation that we have with the reserve amount that has to be maintained, the ruling on that changed, but nobody was aware. Some of you all have been around a long time know that they had to keep a certain amount in the reserve based on the previous bond. When they refunded the bond, that requirement went away. Doesn't mean it's a good thing to dip too low, but it's just nice to know that there is a little bit more flexibility than we've had in the past. I mean, nobody's going to want to go there and it's going to have to be for emergencies. And I think the other, the million dollars and all those things will come with her recommendations, you know, how to handle them with making adjustments in the 10-year plan.
Mr. Crisco.
Yeah. Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Yeah, I just, I would like for us to figure out how to spend this ARPA money that we have. It would sicken me worse than having to give it back and we accomplished little to nothing. So, if there is a way we can figure out to get this money spent that's going to better the service that we give to our citizens that are utilizing these two functions, I think that's our best foot forward.
And that's really where the recommendation comes from. It's not to put Pump Station 11 to the side, but it's whether or not we can spend the money in time.
Right.
And actually make an impact. And all of these are impactful, but I think some of these we can get done within the timeline. I don't do that.
If it had been able to be done, it would have already been spent. That's our problem is you can't find someone that can come and do it for what we have, so...
And some of the timelines of these things, some of the parks and things that are out there, takes a very long lead time. So, we're trying to look back and forth and find the ones that can be done first to jump those up to the front. And then, just to respond to what y'all were saying, is that two things. One is what Ms. Steel said. Right now, we're looking at a large amount of money that may have to be spent. Well, at some point, if there isn't money in the fund, the reserve fund, it could be that the utilities department is asking for a loan from the county, from the general fund, to cover those things until we do get grants in or we include that in our rate increases over the years. It just depends. The number of things that Katie has found, and I tell you, one of the greatest things I tell Katie whenever I talk to her, her ability to absorb knowledge and understand it so that she can get us into the right path quicker is better than we've had. And in the past, no criticism, but because he was an engineer, he felt everything had to go through him. So, there were lots of things that got backed up because one person was trying to review everything from site plans to the construction. Katie's using a team of us. Like you said, there's me, there's Kim, there's her, there's the consultants, there's the people on her staff that have this experience. This has been a team effort and it just makes things move faster because we're all brainstorming together instead of waiting on one person to make the next move. So, she's really done a lot to help move those projects forward. But like you said, each time, no one expected this RO well to fail again. So, as soon as it fails, things start domino that we've got to now replace pumps and cabling and that puts off the things we can do with the surface water plant. So, now it's another three months before we can look at doing things there. But it's going well as far as we're finding things. And when we fix them, we're fixing them. We're not just patching it and putting another patch on something and walking away. We're actually fixing it so that we can confidently tell you, that's going to last, well, I'm not going to promise on any pumps. But that, like all the water lines, it's going to last 10 years. It's going to last 20 years.
At least 14 months.
Yeah, yeah, not 14 months. Two months after out of warranty.
The new motor has a 24-month warranty.
That was one of my questions. 14 months it blow up? That's terrible. Just one thing, one thing, Ms. Leg. There's one question here. The conditional certificates that were due to outstanding action items, I know that had nothing to do with you. And the public should know that, that it had nothing to do with you. And I thank you for finding those because I believe that's something that we could have had a healthy fine if these things weren't corrected. So, thank you so much. And thank you for your staff and your team and Mr. Baines for y'all doing such an outstanding job. And this is, and your presentation was very understandable. Either I'm getting more knowledge or either you just didn't understand the presentation because I could really understand it and it was easy to follow. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, Ms. Steel. Approval of additional holiday in July to finish.
Yes, it was brought up. It seemed like, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I would just like to make the motion.
Do it.
We've already discussed it. I mean, we're actually, we're doing this tomorrow night at the Planning District Commission too for the employees up there. So, the governor has failed to take action yet, but as people are planning, I think they should have as much notice as possible.
Okay. Moves a second. Any discussion? Ms. Steel, you poll the board, please.
Dr. Or. Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Crisco.
Yes.
Mr. Bazani. Mr. Nikosia.
Yes.
Mr. Gibson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Supervisor discussion. Any supervisor discussion? Yes, and Dr. Or.
Yeah, I meant to bring to some other matters presented by the board, but it might be good. Hurricane season starts in a few weeks. Hurricane season. And the prognosis is not a good one. Yeah, NOAA is coming out with their numbers on Friday, the 23rd. Two other companies, Colorado and the weather company have come out with theirs. And it doesn't look really good for hurricane season. The forecast for the weather company was 25 storms, 11, 12 hurricanes, 6 major. And they say that may be a conservative estimate. The problem is we have an El Nino that's turning into a La Nina. And what happened last year when they underestimated the hurricanes is the high temperatures in the North Atlantic waters, which now are higher than they were last year at this time, which is going to fuel even more. So, I know, Mr. Crisco, you're involved in that. And I think it's something that, you know, we need to be really prepared for because, again, we don't know what's going to happen to this area. But from past experiences, when these events have occurred, a lot of the storms are directed from the Atlantic toward the east coast. So, let's just be prepared and watch out carefully. I'm hoping people are paying attention. And I know it's hard to say when we haven't had one in a while, but it only takes one. And, you know, actually, Mr. Crisco, anything we can do to facilitate stuff through the county? Getting VDOT to keep out there, you know, we got to get VDOT to do some stuff on some roads that help water get out of there like down in Guinea. It's pretty bad.
That's, so, was it two weeks ago? We went to an event at Norfolk Airport with NOAA, National Weather Service, VDM. There was another event today at Langley Air Force Base with our Region Five, actually, it might just be, no, he's not Region Five. He's just a hurricane person for VDM. Held an event today that I was unable to attend, but our staff was there. So, we are as prepared as we've ever been for anything that's going to take place. And I agree with you with the help from VDOT. If we were to have anything, unfortunately, the best thing could happen is if those roads received... received some damage from a named storm, then that opens up Pandora's Box of money from FEMA to get those roads raised, fixed, and built back, so they are better suited for tidal flooding to go out from them. I hate to say that, but FEMA will not open that box unless it is destruction caused by a named storm. You know, nor'easter, nope, it doesn't qualify, it has to be a named storm, so we are prepared. I know Mr. Shepherd has been sending the information out, and there'll be another blast of information as we get to that June first. Hurricane season is here, and, you know, I was watching the long-range forecasts, or looking at something possibly popping up next week in the Caribbean, so as you look at all the models, those are things that we have to look at.
Thank you, sir. Any other? No other? Okay, so we have no closed meetings tonight, so it just leaves us one other thing.
Chair.
Yes.
Hold on, sir.
Oh, yes, sir.
So, just real quick, and I should have probably did this earlier, but it's okay. Lot of emails and a lot of phone calls lately about a lot of VDOT issues, so I have been on the phone with our local VDOT and Mr. McKnight, Mr. Sears, and just as a note to the general public, you can email me, you can call me, and I'll talk to somebody on your behalf, but you need to go to their website, put in a request, let that be documented, because as a conversation that I had this week, is that, you know, it looks good for you as a citizen, because you put in your concern, and they can track that. And so, I don't, it doesn't matter to me whether you call or whether you email me from here on out, but my suggestion to those that have been contacting me is, make sure you're putting that work order in. And I told a nice constituent this week, if you don't have the internet, I'll put the work order in for you, and I sit down at the computer and put her concern in, but make sure you're getting those work orders put in, so that it's a paper trail for you, for me, and the rest of the board, and VDOT.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Nikosia. Just one thing to mention here, our next board meeting is May the twenty-ninth, May the twenty-ninth, at the public library here with EDA, is that correct? Okay. Time?
Six P.M.
Six P.M. Okay, thanks. Okay, next, there's one thing left, that's adjournment.
We can adjourn, you usually make that motion.
Oh, I do. I got ready to say amen. I got ready to say amen. Motion in second? Okay. Okay.